Individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'll be seated. All right, number one, approval of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes, consideration of review and approval of the regular meeting minutes of December tenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? None? All right, item two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one. Any comments from the public? I see none, closed. Item number three, reports. Welcome to, item A, welcome to new planning and zoning commissioners. The planning and zoning commissioners welcomes two new commissioners to the board, Marlin Christopher Cox and Jed Noble.
Item B, election of Chair and Vice Chair. Consideration of the combination of Chair and Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for Gary to remain Chair.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'll make a motion. No. That Terry would remain, that we remain Vice Chair. I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? None?
Forgive me.
All right, item C. Welcome aboard again, everybody.
Welcome aboard.
Item C, past council action. Conditional use permit, CUP one-nine dash zero 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 four. A request from Pilot Travel Center's LLC applicant and Ben La Perine of Kingman Plaza LLC, property owner, for an expansion and modification of a conditional use permit for existing truck stop. The subject is cited as Zone C-three, Commercial Service Business, and is located at thirty-three hundred East Antedevine Avenue. The conditional use permit request is to allow for the expansion of the truck parking area onto a portion of the former Kmart property located north of existing Flying J Truck Stop. Other modifications include the relocation of the truck scale and changes to the flow of traffic entering and exiting the site. The subject property is described as lots four through seven of Kingman Air Rail Manor Third, amended section eight, T twenty-one N, R one-seven W of the G and SRN, Mojave County, Arizona, APN three-eleven dash nineteen dash zero zero four A and APN three-eleven dash nineteen zero zero seven B. Richard?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this conditional use permit was approved by the council unanimously at their last meeting and with the same conditions as were recommended by the commission.
All righty, thank you. All right, item number four, new business. Open meeting law presentation. The city clerk's office will provide the Planning and Zoning Commission with a PowerPoint presentation regarding opening meeting law requirements.
Good evening, Chair, Commission members. I'm Annie Meredith. For those of you I haven't got to meet yet, I am the city clerk for the City of Kingman. And this is going to serve as your annual open meeting law training plus new training for your new commissioners. It is a quick presentation. If I go too fast, if you have any questions, just stop me and ask and I'll be happy to answer those for you. So what is our opening, open meeting law? It is a public policy of the state that means that public bodies be conducted openly and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. Toward this end, any person or entity charged with interpretations of this law shall construe any provision of this law in favor of open and public meetings. So basically, the public's business is the public's business, so it has to be conducted in an open meeting forum. All meetings of any public body shall be public meetings. All persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and the proceedings. So again, what does this mean? Public's business has to be conducted in public. Why does it matter? It protects the public and preserves their right to participate in government. It also protects the public officials and maintains integrity of our government, ensures a better informed citizenry, and it builds trust between the government and citizenry. Who must comply? Each and every one of you. So the public body is defined as the legislator, all boards and commissions of the state or political subdivision, all standing special or advisory committees or subcommittees, or appointed by the public body. So every single one of our boards and commissions is considered a public body. This includes any quasi judicial bodies like our Board of Adjustments, Building Board of Appeals, and then we have subcommittees, and those are any entity however designated that is officially established on motion and order of a public body and whose members have been appointed for the specific purpose of making a recommendation concerning decisions to be made or considered or a cause or a course of conduct to be taken or considered by the public body. So if and when you do create subcommittees, those meetings also have to be agendaed, there has to be recording of it, all of that still has to take the same form as your commission meeting would. What constitutes a meeting? It's a gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of the members of a public body and where they discuss, propose, or take legal action, including deliberations by a quorum with respect to such action. So for your public body, there's seven of you, so any time four or more of you are together, that constitutes a quorum. Again, the quorum is a majority of the members of a board or commission, and vacant positions do not reduce the quorum requirement. So that's important to keep in mind. You don't currently have any vacancies, but should you in the future? And then what constitutes a meeting? So it's not just face-to-face interactions anymore. In this world of technology, it includes a lot of things. And this is not an all-inclusive list, this just kind of gives you an overview of what would be included. Email. It's very important that if you are emailed as a commission that you don't reply all, you just reply directly to, like if your recording secretary or your staff liaison, your council liaison was to reach out to you as a body, that you never reply all, that would constitute a quorum. Any conversations, websites, blogs, Facebook conversations are included. So if you start a discussion on Facebook and one of your fellow commissioners or a quorum of your fellow commissioners starts replying or becoming a part of that conversation, then that constitutes a quorum. Same thing, Twitter, LinkedIn, Snapchat, Instagram, Pinterest, text, any type of those technologies where you can have a conversation with a quorum of your people. So you should refrain from sending emails or electronic communications to a quorum of members of the public body. And then, just to avoid serial meetings, you don't want to propose any legal action to members electronically. And then refrain from using electronic communications to discuss with members any matters that are likely to come to the public through your commission meetings. Splintering the quorum. So splintering the quorum can happen when less than a quorum discusses, and then those people go and discuss that same conversation with a couple additional commission members. So it's important to know that if three of you are having coffee and talking about stuff, but it's not a quorum, but then one of you leaves that and goes and talks to another one, you have splintered the quorum. Informing the public. No meeting can take place with less than twenty-four hours' notice to the public. We post, all of our public meetings are posted on our city website in front of the city, or in the entrance to the city complex, sorry, and at our engineering department. Your agendas have to include all of these things, notice of the date, time, location of the meeting. It has to have the specific matters to be discussed, considered, or decided at the meeting. They, and they have to, the summary, I call it, is that such information is reasonably necessary so that the public understands the items you're discussing. So sometimes you get really lengthy agenda items, but the summary doesn't have to have all that, it's just whatever is necessary so the public can understand what the item is about that you're discussing. And then the other matters must in some reasonable manner be related to an item specifically listed on the agenda. This is important because I know this happens in commission meetings, so I really want to emphasize it, only items specifically listed on the agenda can be discussed, considered, or decided. If things that are not on the agenda are discussed, then they are null and void, no action can be taken, and it is an open meeting law violation. So there's opportunities usually at the end of your agendas for future items or to ask staff to look into something further, but you don't want to ever engage in conversation about something that is not specifically listed on your agenda. Call to the public is an agenda item that allows the public to address the public body on topics of concern within their jurisdiction, even though the topic is not specifically listed on the agenda. It is not required by statute, and you can impose a time limit. A really important thing about the call to the public is that that is not an opportunity to engage the person, the person simply delivers the information, and if the commission wants to direct staff to look into it further, or if they want to, at the end, have it be an agenda item on the next meeting, that's fine, but if somebody comes up and they have questions, or they're, and generally they will, they'll post their delivery as a question or remarks wanting a response, that is not a time to respond to them.
That's the hard part, when you sit here and they're asking a question and you'd like to answer it so bad, and I don't think they understand.
No, no, I don't.
And they look at you like...
Yes, and I've been in commission meetings where some, you have, somebody has to say something, but it's best to say, "We will have someone reach out to you," because you don't want to get into discussion with that item at all. And this just covers what I said, you can respond, now you can respond to criticism. If somebody comes up here and they are outright attacking you individually as a member of the public body, you do have the opportunity to respond to that, you want to keep it really short, you don't want to like get in a back-and-forth debate with them, but you do have the opportunity to respond to the criticism. Again, you can ask staff to review it, ask it to be on a future agenda item, or just sit in that awkward silence until they step away from the podium or the thing doesn't stop beeping, which I don't know if you guys use that, but that is an option. If you have an item on your agenda that you know is going to have a lot of comments, like I said before, you have the option to set a timer, and we use them for the city council meetings, we do only allow them three minutes. And it has to be on the agenda, like I said, nothing on the agenda, so I believe call to the public is something that's built into your agenda, if that's something that the commission was to ever decide they didn't want to have as a permanent item, you could just let Sandy know and we could adjust your agenda accordingly. So the public has a right to attend, listen, tape record, and videotape. They do not have the right to speak or be disruptive. So this is, this is the not happy part. If you are to violate open meeting law, and this is on you as an individual, not you as the public body, each individual person can receive up to a five-hundred-dollar violation for, or penalty for each violation. So then that makes it a little personal, there's a little bit more at stake, because it's not the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's each individual commissioner that was a part of that violation. And then if they, if someone was to file a report with the Attorney General and say that you violated it, and they came back and said they did in fact, then you could be removed from office and there could be other penalties associated with that. Conflict of interest. We are a small community, so there are going to be times when conflicts of interest come up on our boards and commissions. It is illegal to fail to declare a conflict of interest under Arizona law, or participate, or otherwise be involved in a discussion on issues or contracts where there is a conflict. This covers all public officers and employees of incorporated cities and towns. This also applies to private interests of public officials or employees' relatives. So you guys see the agenda ahead of time, you know what's going to be on there, if you have a conflict, we do have a form, you can get it from Sandy, and you just note that this item, I have a conflict, I'm going to abstain from voting on it, and that way you protect yourself. In general, a conflict of interest will result when an officer or employee of a city or town, or relative of an officer or employee, is involved in a substantial ownership or salaried employment with a private corporation doing business with the city. A public officer or employee may sell equipment, materials, supplies, or services to the municipality, but that's only after the public competitive bidding process, so. Remote interests. So if you have a remote interest that is so minor, it does not constitute illegal conflicts of interest, then you can vote and participate, and that is going to be obviously up to your discretion on what level of conflict you feel that you have. If you have any questions, you can always contact my office, my office is right down the hall here on the city administration side of the building with Manager Foggan and Mayor Miles, or you can contact our city attorney's office. Does anybody have any questions? No?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item B, Planning and Zoning Commission orientation. Planning staff will give a PowerPoint presentation regarding the purpose, duties, and decision-making requirements of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Richard?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, before I begin, I just wanted to, for you, for those of you who have not met him, our new building official, Chris Young, is taking over our planning zoning, I guess, division. He's the building official and the community development manager, I believe is the title. And so we welcome Chris, Chris, and it's, I think it's going to be a good, smooth transition, so.
Welcome.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission orientation, this is, we do this yearly for those of you who are new on the commission. Commission consists of seven volunteer members appointed by the council. It's an advisory board to the council, and we meet five-thirty on the second Tuesday of each month. And all commissioners are appointed to serve three-year terms. You can also be appointed to serve less than a half a term, and then serve two full, full three-year terms following that. Reappointment after two full three-year terms requires a supermajority vote of the council. All commissioners are required to be residents of the city for at least one hundred eighty days prior to appointment, and maintain their primary residence within the city limits while serving. And this is all of you. So the primary commission duties are to make recommendations to the city council on the following items. First would be to conduct the Kingman Geron Plan updated every ten years. Also, you hear both major and minor amendment requests to the Geron Plan. You hear requests to, for specific plans to be incorporated within the Geron Plan. Abandonment, conditional use permit, rezoning requests are fairly common. You could hear requests for text amendments to the zoning ordinance, so either staff brings you, or someone has requested. You would be reviewing preliminary subdivision plat applications, and hear requests for text amendments to subdivision ordinance in certain cases. Other commission duties, these don't come up real often, but it is something that's in your current zoning ordinance. You would be responsible for reviewing manufactured home park and recreational vehicle park plans, as well as any changes to those plans. Here appeals for, from any of the design review requirements for our two overlay districts that are in Kingman. Here appeals for, from the parking requirements for certain multiple family and commercial districts. And also review any design deviation requests from the appearance criteria. Any commission decisions on that is actually final, it's one of the few things that actually stays with the commission. Commission does not do the following tasks. You don't hear any requests for variances or interpretations of the zoning ordinance, which is the duty of the Board of Adjustment. Commission is also not tasked with making developed decisions or making recommendations to the city council related to approval or denial of building permits, final subdivision plats, releases of assurances for subdivisions, requests for street improvement deferrals, encroachment permits, requests for driveways, minor lot splits known as parcel plats, issues related to public nuisances and property maintenance, any changes to the municipal code, or any issues related to infrastructure or utility improvements unless specifically related to an item that's before you, like a conditional use permit case. So there are really three documents that are the most important to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the staff, and the first one is the Kingman Geron Plan twenty-thirty. And that is the primary tool to guide long-range growth and development in the city. It states the policy, goals, and objectives of the city. It includes a projected land use map, which indicates how citizens desire the city to develop. Any request for rezoning must be in conformance with the projected land use map, and the commission, as I mentioned earlier, is charged with the Geron Plan update process every ten years, where we update the entire plan. State statutes require the plan to be updated on, on or before the ten-year anniversary of the plan's most recent adoption, and that was in March of two thousand fourteen, and also requires the citizens to ratify the plan, that was in November of two thousand fourteen. So the next year on plan update should occur no later than two thousand twenty-four. We'll be starting that process probably in, I would say, probably the summer or fall of two thousand twenty-two. This is about a two-year process. And this is the current Geron Plan land use map, showing the residential density, designations, as well as the commercial intensity designations throughout the city, as well as industrial areas, parks and open spaces in public, in quasi-public areas. So then the zoning ordinance, its role is to implement the Geron Plan through the establishment of zoning districts and various development standards. Unlike the Geron Plan, which guides land use decisions, the zoning ordinance actually regulates the use of property. Our current zoning ordinance was adopted in nineteen seventy-one and has been continuously amended since that time, but we are currently undergoing a full update with the expected completion date at the end of this year, and that's been an ongoing project since this past July. This is the current zoning map of Kingman, it's a little hard to read at this scale, but it is available on the city's website, if you ever want to go in there and explore it a little bit. Now, the subdivision ordinance regulates the division of land and what improvements must be made in order to subdivide land in the city, and this is considered administrative, not a legislative process, although preliminary subdivision plats do come before the, before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Subdivisions are not subject to referendum of the voters. Also, it does not regulate land use. So this is just an example of a typical subdivision layout, showing the lot locations, the general dimensions, street locations, water and sewer lines, and the infrastructure. That's kind of what you'd see when we present a subdivision to you for your review. And then, as far as decision-making on these items, first, the Geron Plan. For Geron Plan amendment cases, the commission needs to consider the following, whether the amendment that's being proposed is consistent with the policies and objectives of the Kingman Geron Plan, and does the proposed amendment further the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Kingman. If the amendment changes a land use map, a finding also must be made that the proposed change is compatible with other land uses existing or planned in the vicinity. For rezoning cases, if amend the official zoning map, the commission needs to consider the following, whether there's a need for the uses that would be permitted in the zoning district, how suitable that change is, looking at the surrounding areas, whether it be negative impacts, and does the zoning conform to the Geron Plan? That's probably the most important question to answer. For text amendments, the commission needs to consider the amendment's compatibility with the goals and objectives of the Geron Plan. For conditional use permits, the commission needs to make recommendations and consider the following, whether the proposal is consistent with the applicable regulations, compliance with bulk regulations, any negative impacts on the surrounding area and community in general, impacts on traffic patterns, landscaping and fencing requirements, and you want to try to avoid the creation of nuisances by what's being proposed with the CUP, and there are other conditions that you can apply to the development of property as a condition of approval. Finally, for preliminary plats, the commission would be considering or making recommendations on whether the plats consistent with the subdivision requirements and the zoning ordinance development standards, and also would be considering any petitions of exceptions that the developer may be putting before you from the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, whether those are appropriate. So important decision-making rules of thumb, these are just very general, and you already heard from Annie about the need to disclose substantial conflicts of interest, so I won't go through that again, but that's important. Also, it's very important to avoid what we call personality-based decisions. Sometimes someone will come before you that you either like or don't like, and that's not the, not the reason to make it a, make a decision on an item, it should be based upon the facts and the information that's before you, and that's important to remember. And also, when we do have public comments and concerns, sometimes it can be a little intimidating to commissioners, especially if you're new, new, but you should consider those, but also balance those comments with consideration of best planning practices and the overall needs of the community. So that's important to always keep in mind. So that concludes my little presentation, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I have one question, but I kind of figured, I looked it up while you were talking. I didn't know what bulk regulation is, but that's just the placement of the buildings? And making sure that it's adequate?
Yeah, it's things like the height and the setbacks and things like that for the property.
Okay, so that's in general, okay, that's standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
All righty, item number C. Planning and Zoning Commission Annual Report Luncheon. Each year, the planning and zoning staff prepare an annual report for the activities of the previous year and presents it to the Planning and Zoning Commission at a luncheon. The luncheon is held at a local restaurant and is hosted by the city of Kingman. So I'm assuming we're looking in February?
Mr. Chairman, there is a calendar in your packet there that you could take a look at.
Calendar in there, and they're reminding the week after the seventeenth.
I'm going to be out of town in and off the last two weeks, February.
I'm available anytime for that week of seventeenth through the twenty-first.
I am too.
If we did it towards the beginning, I'd be there, I'm leaving on Thursday of that week.
Like eighteenth? What's good for staff at any day of the week?
Is the eighteenth good?
We're closed on the seventeenth because that's President's Day, but the rest of the week, well, we're also normally open on Fridays, but Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday that week, I think, is fine.
Is the eighteenth good with everybody?
It's good for me.
Good for me.
Okay, so the eighteen.
Eighteenth?
Where?
McDonald's. Or as, or as the contestant, or the contestant on the game show said, chicken. Or as, or as the contestant, or the contestant on the game show said, chicken.
Did you guys have a good experience at Garibaldi's? Because I went there today and it was awesome.
We went there last year.
So good.
It was excellent.
Excellent, that's like, that's pretty amazing, for only 3 hours, 12 hours a week that they're open, but it's, wow.
So do you want to do that again? Do you want to do it again?
I'm good with Garibaldi's.
I think it's beautiful.
That's absolutely.
Okay, I'm good.
Mm-hmm. I see, that's great.
Sounds good.
I've only been there once, but wow.
Yeah.
What time do we usually?
He opens that.
I think 11:30 is when we usually do it.
11:30? 11:30.
So we have February 18th at 11:30 at Garibaldi's. All righty. All righty, item number five, announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars. Requests for agenda items for future meetings and requests or reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. I want to make a couple. I want to welcome aboard Jamie Staley and Chris, I'd like to welcome you aboard, and I'd like to welcome the two new members here. And one thing I could probably benefit you and everybody else too, is just a reminder, is that General Plan, read that book, it's a good, all the information is in that General Plan 2030. It's well, it's well worth spending your time, and not that you got to memorize it, but it's everything that deals, it'll help you out. All right, I need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I got a motion, I'll second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Posed?
That was easy.